Okay, I think if we're getting files put into something.
Yeah.
We can do that.
No, no worries. Okay, I'll send it right now.
Okay, Madam Chair, until that she's going to text County Council an ability to remote in. So it's the floor is yours if you wish to get a run.
So we don't, we don't need to use our, we don't.
It's only fire replacement.
You know, if we're not getting feedback, I would just assume keep it for CMAP and all the other stuff.
Don't turn this on.
I have mine on.
All right, whatever's right. Well, let's see. We'll call the meeting to order.
Good evening, six oh seven.
And have the pledge allegiance. Mr. Rodriguez, would you carry out that duty?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, Ariel?
Let staff, let staff notes that we have a full quorum. All five commissioners are present. Commissioner Eggers and Navarro, remote through Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have an acknowledgement of the certificate of posting? It is so acknowledged?
So acknowledged.
And there's nothing further on the consent calendar, so acknowledged. Thank you very much.
I'm not seeing anything. We didn't get any minutes yet on the last meeting?
No, it was just two weeks ago and no, no, I haven't. No, thank you.
Perfect. All right. Can we proceed to the public hearing?
We can. Thank you. Let me introduce that for a moment. Tonight's land use item will be presented by Ariel Goodspeed. And I could read this, Ariel, or maybe you'd just like to do that as part of your presentation.
Go ahead if you like.
What we have today is a use permit modification for the Fire Clay Tile Company manufacturing up there in Aromas. And Ariel is here to present the staff presentation. We also have the applicant present, Eric, I'm sorry, your last name, sir?
Edelson.
Eric Edelson, representing the company who also has a PowerPoint and some slides to share that'll add more color to what they do at the facility. And Mr. Damon Felice is also here. He's been assisting the property owner as a project construction manager, you know, getting documents together so that the planning department and planning division had the right materials to review and bring those to you. So we have those persons present today and we'll kick off with a presentation from Ms. Goodspeed.
Hi, Ariel Goodspeed, Assistant Planner with the County of San Benito, here to discuss use permit county file number PLN 200025, Fire Clay Tile located at 521 Quarry Road. So as Tabin mentioned, staff will be discussing elements of the use permit. Following me is Eric Edelson, CEO of Fire Clay Tile Company, and he has a presentation for you as well. And Aaron Haraway, consultant with Denise Stuffy, is also available via Zoom for any questions pertaining to the initial study or proposed mitigated negative declaration. So our subject parcel is 4.89 acres. It's located outside of the unincorporated area of Aromas alongside Quarry Road. To the northeast is Granite Rock, or also known as AR Wilson Quarry. To the northwest is the Paharo River. Immediate surrounding is Driscoll Properties to the southwest and southeast. These are a few current photos of the subject parcel. The top left is the view of the property looking towards the Paharo River. The top right is a view of the project site facing northwest. The bottom left is a view of the parking lot facing northeast. And the bottom right is a view of the property showing at grade, the railroad crossing facing east. So the existing manufacturing operation includes eight buildings, approximately 31,000 square feet, and a facility offsite in Gilroy. The proposed manufacturing operations will include demolishing four of those buildings, consolidating the Gilroy facility, and constructing a new production, storage, and office building, along with additional onsite improvements that will be discussed further. To the right on the top is an existing view of the subject parcel and structures there. In white are the structures that are going to remain, and red are all of the structures to be demolished. Below is the proposed construction. Again, white is structures to remain, and the gray is the new structures to be built. This is the same, just from different views. So the top left and bottom left is a view from the southwest. The top right and bottom right is a view from the southeast. This is the proposed site plan. In front is Quarry Road. Access to the site crosses Union Pacific Railroad. As you enter, to the right is parking. Going all the way down is where the trucks will be, they're moving for deliveries and pickups as well. On the top left corner is the new proposed septic system. The road circling all of the buildings, that is going to be the new fire access road. And it is actually located on, outside of the property on neighboring properties and has, will have agreements to have that fire access road on their, on their properties. So in the light gray is the existing buildings to remain, referenced as G and P on the site plan. G is the kiln and production building, and P is a storage building. The dark gray buildings, referenced as X, B, and Z on the site plan. X is going to be the storage and then also the truck delivery building. B is going to be the new office building, and Z is going to be a new production building. So a little bit, we wanted to review with you what is changing and what, and what's being added and what's going to remain exactly the same. It's remaining still a manufacturing tile company. The operations will still be 24 hours, Monday through Friday, with some weekend work. The current employees, there's 107. The proposed use is going to have seven new employees, so a total of 114 with the consolidation of the Gilroy facility. The current amount of square footage is 31,000. When you remove the four buildings and build the three new buildings, the total square footage is going to be 79,186. The, some of the additional site improvements, it will include improved parking, security lighting, improved access, and railroad crossing, improved drainage, improved septic infrastructure, new well with an osmosis system, and improved emergency access as described previously. So the land use consistency, it has a general plan designation of industrial heavy and a zoning designation of heavy industrial M2. The primary purpose of heavy industrial zoning is to, is to provide areas for heavy industrial activities that are not located near urban centers due to noise, traffic, dust, or other safety elements. And the expansion that's being proposed remains consistent with the land use. For CEQA, an initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration was prepared in compliance with CEQA and circulated publicly from June 3rd through June 24th, 2020. The county received no public comment, written or verbal, for the initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration. The county did receive three letters of public comment to the project itself. One came from San Benito County Business Council, another came from the Economic Development Corporation of San Benito County. The third came from the neighbor Granite Rock. And all three letters that are also in front of you were in support of the project. So that was the only public comment that the county did receive was for the project. Staff would like to recommend to the planning commission to review the staff report and review the attached draft resolution, which includes findings and conditions of approval, and review the draft initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration. Staff further recommends that the planning commission make the findings included in the resolution and the initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration, and adopt the resolution and initial study mitigated negative declaration to approve use permit county file number PLN 200025, subject to the conditions of approval found in the resolution. If you like, before we dive into maybe some of the comments or questions, would you like to hear from CEO Eric Edelson first?
Yes, of course.
Okay, great.
So Mr. Edelson will be making presentation. He's got a presentation PowerPoint that is online that he needs to log in. But I just would like to also share with you some of the guests we have participating today online is Aaron, excuse me, Aaron Haraway from DDA who prepared the initial study with, in concert with county staff. There's Keith Higgins is involved. We see that RMA Director Mavroginis is online as well. And so we, should there be questions regarding the environmental document or the use permit, we can, we can address those as we go forward. But I think the, Mr. Eric's presentation will be very informative.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have very complicated passwords through a password manager, so just one second.
We're used to waiting these days.
No, no, we'll go quick. Apologize about that. Then there's the two-step verification, just to make sure.
Thumbprint and.
Okay, I know, that was, we're almost there. All right.
And then we'll be share screen once we're there. Okay, good.
All right, so.
So Ariel, that's coming across on the CMAP, but I don't think it's quite the share screen like you had.
Sorry. Can I do it for you?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see it there.
We're going to expand, share screen.
That's the bottom left.
This one? Okay. Okay, yes, there you go.
There we go.
That good for everybody? Everyone see who's online? Good thumbs up? Awesome. All right, really nice to see you all. Good evening. Thanks so much for having me give us this opportunity. My name is Eric Edelson. I have the honor of being the CEO of Fire Clay Tile. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit about our organization and why this project is so important to our future. So we, our roots run really deep in the Bay Area. Fire Clay was actually started in 1986 in San Jose. But the gentleman who's, and it was started by the gentleman in the bottom right, Paul Burns. But his uncle, who's in the bottom middle, Chester, had a company called Stone Light Tile in San Jose that had its roots going back to the 1950s. And there was even a previous company before that going back to 1920. So California in general has a very rich tile heritage. We're what's called an artisan tile maker, and so we compete against much larger mass production companies. We have a lot of those in Tennessee and Ohio here in the United States, and then of course, a tremendous amount from China, Italy, Spain, India, and other places. So what we do is very unique, very differentiated. I always say what we do is artisan at scale. And so we really try to embody the artisan work of, the heritage of California tile making. But we do it in a Bay Area, California way with modern innovation and a totally radically better approach to business. So our factory in Aromas, Ariel did a fantastic job of talking about it. We have 100 factory team members today. And one of the reasons we saw, we're not actually adding that many people. If you, if you came in and saw our factory, we're very tight. So if you compared it to other manufacturing operations, we definitely have way more peoples on a per square foot basis than comparable companies. We're just really crammed in there. So we need more space for inventory, for raw materials, for storage, for efficiencies. And that will allow us to grow into the growth that we know is ahead for us. So I want to show you just a quick little video of our operation, because I think, I can show you pictures, but honestly, a video is worth a thousand words. Let's see if this works. If it doesn't work, then yeah, it's not working. Okay, that's okay. So we'll move on. So we are very focused on sustainability. We've had a long track record of using recycled materials here in California. We actually received quite a lot of funding from CalRecycle, which is a state agency in Sacramento that promotes local recyclers. We recycle our body, so any waste materials that we have, we crush up, we reincorporate it. We recycle our water onsite in our glaze operation. We recycle our glaze waste. Our aim is to be zero waste by 2021 and be certified for that. We also offset all of our carbon emissions for our entire operation. We're certified as a climate neutral organization, which is, which is very unique. So last year, we paid about $25,000 offsetting all of our carbon for our Scope 1, 2, and 3, all of our emissions. We also buy all renewable power from Monterey Bay Renewable Power, although we would like to put solar panels on top of this property. We're also really different. We're what's called a B Corp or benefit corporation. So I have this little badge here. This is something that is a pretty unique approach to business. So B Corps are certified businesses that go above and beyond. So companies that you may have heard of that are B Corps are Ben &amp; Jerry's, Patagonia. These are socially responsible businesses. And we actually hold ourselves accountable to a third-party standard and measure ourselves at a community level, what we do for the community, what we do for our employees, how we manage our business from a corporate governance, and what we do for our, for our environment. So a couple of stats about us, we pay a fair living wage. So our starting wage at Fire Clay is $15 an hour. All team members have equity ownership. 14% of our company is owned by our employees, and it's one of my missions to increase that pretty significantly. We divert a significant amount of materials from landfill. We're at about 60% right now. We want to get to 90% before year end. 80% of our products have recycled content, and all of our products are made in North America. We sell one product line from another vendor in Canada, but really, we sell what we make, we make what we sell. We have a 60% of our leadership team is female, and our company is basically 50/50 male/female with a tremendous diversity, including a large local Hispanic population. We donate a lot to the local community, not just in dollars, but in tile. Last year, we donated over $100,000 of tile. And we have a pledge of donating 1% of tile every year. So if we make a million square feet, we're going to donate 10,000 square feet in a year. So this is our product. I always like to say we make the world's most beautiful tile. I don't know if you knew that that was happening here in San Benito County, but it is. And we ship this tile all over the world. We're most known for our tile, on the top left, our kind of field tile. We also do this incredible hand painted tile work. We have eight team members painting these decorative tiles all day. We do beautiful mosaic work. One of the projects we're incredibly proud of right now, we just did a new, it was just at the, one of the front pages of one of the sections of the New York Times, New York Times newspaper, LaGuardia Airport just opened a new terminal, and there's a 30,000 square foot mosaic installation that we produced here. That is highly custom. Governor Cuomo actually laid some of the tiles himself and just opened and like the entire front entrance of one of these new terminals. So something we're incredibly proud of and really custom. So we have standard colors, but we do a lot of custom work, and I'll tell you more about that. But these are just some photos of our product. Again, we have, we have team members in seven states, and we ship to all, all 50 states. We actually collect and remit sales tax in 30, and you have to sell over $100,000 to basically qualify for that. So that just gives you a sense of kind of where we are. What's different about Fire Clay is most of the world tile works where you make it, you send it to a distributor, or then gives it to a retailer to sell to a customer. That's how typically the tile buying experience is. What's different about us is we actually do all of it. So we have a strong technology backbone. We have a 25-person sales organization, so we make it and sell it. So we're fully vertically integrated. It's what allows us to have better financial profile, which allows us to be a better employer for our team members and give them better benefits, better pay, and all of that. But the product itself is absolutely beautiful. You see this. We do half of our business is for residential and half is for commercial. Do a lot of corporate offices, a lot of restaurants, hotels, hospitality. Do a lot of kitchens, bathrooms, and again, just with the diversity of products, we have 130 colors and 40 sizes. You see the different design capabilities that one has. This is our agrarian collection that our creative director, Jamie, created. It's inspired by the agriculture field. So think about flying an airplane over San Benito County. You see all these beautiful patterns in the ground from all the ag. That's what our tile is inspired by, and it's absolutely beautiful. This is the Bernardo's Lodge down in Carmel Valley. A lot of their restrooms have our tile in it. Really, really exquisite. So, and this is our Salesforce.com. We've done their offices globally. We've done about 250 different, sorry about that. About 250 different projects for them around the world, and all their amenity spaces have different custom mosaics based on the geography and the inspiration of that office in that local environment. This is a outside facade of a, of a building in San Francisco. All of that brick we glaze, it's actually five different custom colors of black, if you can imagine. And these are some of our partners. It's the who's who of the world of customers. It's who you want. We have folks like Google and Facebook. We do a lot of work with Starbucks, Whole Foods. We got, we kind of got our start with Whole Foods. They kind of saved us during the last recession, and we were like hyper consolidated with them. Now we're way more dispersed and spread out, which gives us a lot of flexibility. We have almost no customer concentration, which gives us a lot of like defensibility and allows us to grow. During my 11 years at Fire Clay, just to give you some perspective, I helped take the company from about 20 to just about 150 people. So we've grown tremendously. We've increased revenues about 14x, and right now, we're growing about 30% a year. We've taken a little bit of a step back with COVID, but honestly, we're flat to last year right now, and I think we'll finish the year up. So we have a very resilient business model, and part of that is because of our strong commitment to customers, customer service, technology backbone, and just the strength of the brand and the product itself. So what we're seeking tonight is really your support. We, we are bursting at the seams in our current facility. I mean, we have really done wonders there. People walk through it and are just in shock at how much material we're able to produce in such a small space. While we have quite a bit of acreage, as Ariel said, we have very little roof space, so we're really challenged. It's hard for our team members during wet climates and wet times. We are using tarps. People are outside. It's really not ideal. We had to lease this offsite warehouse in Gilroy, but we're literally running trips every single day back and forth. Incredibly wasteful, incredibly inefficient. So we either do this expansion project here in San Benito County, or we're forced to move. Now, we've looked around at other areas in the area. Honestly, we love Aromas. We love San Benito County. We love our people. We would like to stay. We get called every week from different states, Texas, Nevada, Ohio, you name it. They are just wanting to attract people. And they're very aggressive at California companies because they've had so much success moving them, but we would like to stay. But we really need to expand. We need to expand where we are. It's going to be challenging for us to do that, to build while producing. It's going to be challenging for us to do that, to build while producing at full capacity. But we've got a great partner in Damon, and we've got incredible team. We've done a lot of work to get to this point, and we have a great plan to move forward right away. So we have the financing to get it done, and really, we just love your support. So I want to say thank you. Hope you follow us on Instagram or Pinterest, our website. We have about 200,000 followers on Instagram. So very, lots of inspiration, lots of fun. And again, just really want to thank you for your time and your support. Happy to answer any questions or turn it back over to Ariel.
Thank you. Nice presentation. Commissioners, are there any questions?
No.
Mr. Eggers?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Mr. Navarro?
No, not at all. Wonderful presentation as well, but no, nothing for me.
You didn't want to bid on your bathroom?
We can discuss that after the meeting.
Any hands raised?
Do we have any public comment? Is there anyone waiting in the wings?
Moment wishing to speak to the matter? And there's nobody present in the gallery just to let the public...
There were no emails or anything? We have the three letters is all?
Oh, wait, I do have a hand raised, and it may be, it may be Director Mavroginis. May I hook them in, please?
Please.
Okay, do I unmute? Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Yes, thank you. You are live.
Hello, this is Harry Mavroginis. I just wanted to express our very strong support for this project. I think the applicant has done a tremendous job of meeting all requirements, and it's going to be a tremendous job creator. We also have a letter today from the San Benito Chamber of Commerce in support. I came a little late, but we would strongly urge your approval for the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Nice to hear your voice here. Do we have any further business before... I'm moving on this.
Close public comment.
You can close public comment, and then if there's any discussion that you wish to have...
Didn't we just do public comment?
We did, but I believe you formally...
Oh, close the public comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public comment is closed at 6:34.
Got it. In this case, do we have a motion on the floor? A motion to...
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-Next, a resolution of the San Benito County Planning Commission approving use permit file number PLN 200025 with all findings and conditions.
All those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
The motion carries five to zero?
Yes.
Well, that's great. You have a brand-new use permit. Thank you very much. Although there's no evidence of controversy, the item is appealable to the Board of Supervisors within 10 calendar days. But you may proceed to apply for building permits should there be any adjustments, you know, or delay due to an appeal. And we'll have to weather that, but you're welcome to move forward with your conditions of approval. Congratulations, and thank you for being such a strong part of San Benito County.
Yeah, no, thank you, Tom. Thank you so much.
All right, great.
Thank you, welcome.
It's an exciting project. We're very pleased that you have brought this to San Benito County. And it's a good spot, really a good spot. You can bring all that clay in on rails.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, Madam Chair, we closed the use permit and the public hearing items. And should the commissioners have any comments, now would be a good time to share.
Are there any public comments, I mean, any comments from our commissioners?
The only comment that I have, I guess, would be directed to the RMA Director about the upcoming virtual conference in September and to see if we can get an answer for registration and if any of the commissioners are interested in attending the conference.
A virtual conference.
Is Mr. Mavroginis still with us?
Yes.
Yep, and he has raised his hand. One moment here. Still learning the technology here. There we go. Mr. Mavroginis, you are live.
Yes, good, Tom. And yes, I did receive the information on that. I would like to, how many of the commissioners are interested in participating in that? It's not a very expensive conference. If you're all interested, I think we can accommodate you.
It should be...
Let us know.
Do we have any hands on interest?
Commissioner Eggers or Navarro, do you wish to join a virtual conference? Kind of probably be like a webinar and all-day affair?
I'm interested, Eddie. Mr. Eggers?
Yeah, the nice thing about the last conference that we had online, that they do give you an agenda, and you can kind of pick the times. If there are things you're really not interested in, and that's the nice thing about the Zoom meetings, is that you can go back. They do keep them online. And so you get your money out of the conference in both the past that we've gone to and the present, so.
Well, that's fabulous. Great. So, yeah, Director Mavroginis, that's two, and probably count a third in, maybe myself participating, so I can bring that back.
I'm interested. Did Eddie respond?
And Eddie?
Okay.
Four, Ariel.
Did Eddie?
Yes.
We'll take it out of the commissioner salaries.
Sure.
Any further comments from the commissioners, Madam Chair?
Are there any further comments?
Nope. Well, with that, there's one more item left on the agenda.
Do we have a move, a motion? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. Meeting adjourned, 6:39. Thank you very much.
Let's vote on it.
We got to vote on it?
All those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Rodriguez, you always do well with that.
Five-zero. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll see.
Good job. Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah.